All right, everybody. We'd like to welcome here today as we started meeting. Sorry, we're a few minutes late. This is, I'm Commissioner Jenkins. Commissioner Harvey's with me. Commissioner Faur has asked to be excused for the first half hour. So we have also in the room Sean Wilkinson and Kirk Nygro. And Kirk, we welcome you here. You're here to give us a a little bit of a report on Rockin' Out Power. So go ahead. We'll turn the time over to you.
Okay. So I gave you folders, kind of a real fast kind of agenda of topics to go over. This is kind of our annual update. Make sure everything's going okay and then do our community performance plan, do any updates that we need to do on that. How I always start these meetings, are there any burning concerns or issues that you've had with Rockin' Out Power?
Didn't we just get through that court case with him? Where it was on.
Centrally assessed.
Yeah, centrally assessed taxes. I think we just finished that. I think we settled it.
Yeah.
Sean, am I right there?
I believe you are correct.
It seems like I remember getting an email from Portland and he's recommended that we, we agree to the terms and I give him my okay. Did you give him yours?
So Kirk, I think what he's saying there is your people govern our people and they settle.
I think that's exactly right.
Perfect. That's good news. Isn't how it always works? We'll have your people get with our people. They're usually lawyers. They have lunch, settle things, it's all that.
And then you get a bill.
Yeah, then you get a bill. That's right. That's exactly right.
For the lunch and the time.
Exactly. Yeah.
So I think we're okay.
So we're good on that. Okay.
So when we have these lunches, lunch meetings, we have lunch here. So you're welcome to participate because we get going.
Okay. Appreciate that. So then if we've got that out of the way, the community performance plan, this is last year's plan. I just put 2022 on. First few paragraphs are just saying we want to be, you know, top tier service for you guys. The main, the main issues are these bullet points that we've kind of discussed in the past. Coordinate tree trimming efforts with county staff. Bob Van Fleet is our arborist that's local here. He's, he's an incredible guy, always trying to look at, you know, how we can do things better, lease invasive. And he's, he's given me some really good talks about, you know, kind of how we try to approach our tree trimming to maintain.
So Bob Van.
You actually have his contact information is in there.
Let's get it.
Okay. On that second page in.
Second, I, I put his information in here because there was a last bullet provider member for the Weaver County Weed Board.
Yeah.
He would, he's agreed he would be your candidate.
Vanderhoof. That's good.
Hey, Stace. Here's another guy that'd be good. For the Weaver County Weed Board. No. Robert Vanderhoof. Will you make a copy of this?
Okay.
We'll make sure he gets an application. So Kirk, in the past, we've gotten phone calls or letters. Sometimes Rocky Mountain Power will go out and put some kind of a chemical around the base of the poles. Would that be Robert that handles that type of stuff as well?
I, I'm not sure he'd be involved with our actual asset, you know, a power pole. I mean, that'd be just some kind of protective putting on it to prevent deterioration of the wood.
Yeah, okay.
But I mean, just recently I had a pole patch up in, was it?
Was it Pleasant View?
Pleasant View area. Resident contacted us along the right of way. They've done some spraying and was asking questions about that. Reach out to Bob.
Okay.
And he said, yeah, this is, we found that the, in the past, we'd go through a clear, that clearing sometimes can kind of hit rocks and create sparks and actually create a fire hazard. So we're going with kind of chemicals to keep the right away.
Yep, that's exactly what it was.
For the beans safer.
Okay. So Kirk, could I ask, add him as an APOC member? Because we have some members that represent like the railroad or UDA or whatever.
Whatever you, last, last year you said you wanted someone from our, our groups and so he would be a good representative in whatever capacity.
Okay, perfect. I'll start inviting him. Thank you.
Yep.
This is good. Good.
Yeah, no, kind of follow up on this. Obviously, we want to work closely with the commissioners and staff to ensure coordinated planning efforts to meet the county's power needs. We'll talk about a few of the projects that we have going on in a few minutes. Continue to support Ogden Canyon Trail Project. Interestingly enough, part of that El Monte to Eden wildfire mitigation program that we're doing to work with our transmission and distribution lines, kind of harden that system is their work, they will be working on a design for distribution and transmission in the canyon. And when they, when our planners kind of mentioned that, I said, we need to get Ogden City involved so that we can maybe try to work on a mutually beneficial plan that allows that path to go in place.
Good.
So I'm actively trying to drive that coordination.
So we had that initial meeting. Have you heard back from Ogden City?
I have. So I met with Ogden City a week ago.
Okay, great.
And they have invited our team to come out with an onsite visit to kind of look.
Perfect.
So we're, I, I'm going to do the, our darnedest because they did say that the mayor's top priority with Rocky Mountain Power is getting that path. And so I've even kind of relayed that up, 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 up my management call saying, hey, this is, this is a priority for Ogden. We kind of, we need to accommodate as much as we can. So working on it. I'm an advocate for it. I think that'd be right. Continue a strong corporate citizenship through supportive county economic development activities, Chamber of Commerce, legislative activities, support of Hill Air Force Base. Craig Bruder is my counterpart. He's, he manages the Hill Air Force Base account. We're, I think.
He's a good dude.
He is a phenomenal dude. We're a one star sponsor for the airshow that's coming up in the next, next month. I think later this month.
Twenty fifth and twenty sixth.
Yes, correct. And, you know, I think, you know, we are definitely supporting. I, I pulled some numbers on the community funding. This year I've got budget $23,000 in discretionary funds that are going out to Weaver County cities that were cities as well as other kind of organization sponsors in the county. That's just the community funding. And then I think you probably noticed I've started to close you guys on some of my foundation grants. We are breaking, we're kind of breaking records. I kind of went out to everybody and said, hey, you know, we have, we have this Rocky Mountain Power Foundation with this Adama Fund that will support the communities and Weaver as well as Davis, both counties were fairly underserved. This last run, I was able to squeak away 23% of the funding for that, out of the state. What impacted these areas? So I had 16 grants. I just got 15 grants put on my desk for this quarter. Thank you. Yeah, no.
Yeah, we appreciate your efforts there.
Yeah, it's a win. It's a win. It's a definite, I mean, I'm kind of a, we can say words, but really actions speak louder than words and us making those investments.
So he's, he's reached out to us and of course I put him in touch with your people and Scott. He's, Craig's been, or not Craig, but Kirk's been really good at that.
No, we're definitely taking off on it. Increased access to clean energy, especially EV charging stations allow broader acceptance of EVs. We're actually working, so the Ogden area has been selected for high use EV chargers or high power. So we're talking 350 KV or larger. We're going to put two of those superchargers in.
Where?
So we're working with the city of Ogden, somewhere within a mile off the highway, but in the city, kind of in, in Ogden area. So maybe, again, we're, we're kind of working that through Ogden. We're waiting for them to put in an application that we've presented to them. And then we put a couple of 150s with as well. So when you kind of look at that, the, the load could be over a megawatt of load on those charging stations, but those 350 KV chargers, my understanding is will charge a four lightning to 80% eight minutes or something.
Oh wow.
I mean, they're, because it's, it's.
Yeah, 350 is pretty good. They have 350, goes up there 400, some of the Tesla stuff's at 4 now.
So we're talking seriously. And so we're trying to promote EVs.
That's hot.
In the system, we have a lot of incentive programs that are available. I know Leyton City asked for kind of an EV presentation. That'll be kind of on my, in my, my, my dialogue on the points here, but we're definitely involved. Wildfire mitigations in Eden, that's definitely kind of picking up. We've got a, got a concern, not a concern, but just a situation I want to discuss with you guys, kind of get you guys ahead of the, the topic on kind of an outage situation. Which is going to kind of impact, unfortunately, kind of have a radial feed, which means there's just one that's not looped. So if we have to do an outage, it pretty much takes out the entire canyon through, I've got a map that'll show you, but pretty much the whole Huntsville Valley.
Really?
It's not looped, you say?
It's not looped.
Will it be when it's done?
No. It's possible at some point, when we talked about looping that, you're talking tens of millions of dollars to try to get that as a loop system.
I just wondered if you'd do something over the, the.
You, you've got a transmission line that runs in the north side of the.
Of the divide. I was thinking.
Yeah, the north of the divide, you've got that transmission line now. So if you could feed from that into that, that Eden substation, then it'd be a loop system. It's just, it's extremely expensive. So there is some preliminary analysis that's happening internally. But where that goes, it's a tough, tough call. It's been radial since, you know, we haven't changed anything. It's just when you're kind of.
For decades.
For decades. And so if we're working on it and the tough thing is it's that span across the dam. There's really, sometimes you can kind of shoe fly. You can kind of do it temporary around where you're working. But around that dam, there's no area to really maneuver. And so they're looking at in September, four outages in the middle of the night from like 10 to eight in the morning. Where they can, and then they'll recharge it up. And as they work and before it means it kind of impact the entire community, including Snow Basin.
It's going to be important to message. We need to make sure that, I'm fact, I'll send her a message right now.
Now, we don't have exact dates yet. Still a little farther out, but I just kind of want to get that ball rolling because that's going to impact anybody, you know, anybody with a medical equipment or whatever. Have to kind of figure out a backup plan.
That's okay. As long as we know you're doing it.
Yeah. And, and the benefit to the community obviously is we're going to get a, a better system that's going to be more, it's going to be more reliable and more safe. Kind of mitigating that fire, wildfire risk. And then provide a member for the Weaver Board. I think we, I think I can take that off the list because you've got Bob. You've got that connected. So I'll just, or I guess we could say we could support the we're, we'll obviously support the Weaver County Weed Board.
Yeah.
So those are, is there any other kind of hot buttons or anything that should, should also be included that you kind of want us to perform on?
One thing that I'd like you to just, for me, that I keep hearing, and I haven't heard any problems. But I know they're getting ready to fire up the pump stations, one, two, three, four, and five for the Powder Mountain Water Sewer Improvement District. That's going up to the Powder Mountain Road. The water district used to be on a different type of a format. So I know getting just, you can, one quick call to Roy Watts would be a great help. And his number is, his mobile's 801-510-2093.
801-510-2093.
Yeah, if you just call Roy Watts. Roy Watts. He's the manager, water manager. But it's, it's a project that's been three or four years in the making. And there was a time when we couldn't get the power, da, 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 da. I haven't heard that dialogue for six months now.
Okay.
Just, I, that, this might just be, just making sure everything's okay. Kirk, to tell you how long ago this was, I called Craig Bristol early on. How long's he been gone and whatever? Yeah.
So has this been, I haven't heard anything lately about long lead times on subdivision connections. Are you starting to catch up?
Oh yeah, that's good.
It's, it's a balance. The, the biggest issue that we're really running into, and I think now the bottleneck's starting to become materials.
Oh, huh.
I know.
Oh, for you. So you're struggling with drill as well.
Everybody's kind of starting and it's, and it's kind of a review of our system, our procurement system, because we tend to be, you know, kind of bid out least cost.
And but everybody's finally done, everybody.
And so now we have some people that are marking up so you can get it faster. And we haven't, we haven't been able to be nimble enough to adjust our practices to take advantage of that.
You know, we've made a couple of exceptions recently because of lead times. We've got, we've had people cuss as heavily are.
Yep.
Because we've tried to work with them.
So it's, it's, it's a challenging environment. But we're basically, we're trying to do the best that we can to accommodate. And it has been labor, I mean, labor materials, everybody's brought out of somewhere. So I know our estimators.
What you do. This is hard.
I feel bad for them. They got files that are just stacked.
Right.
Kind of like those movies now. But they just got to keep, keep working on and getting through just kind of that endless flow. And, and growth is just, it's still just a high growth area.
Yeah.
I don't think it's going to, it's not going to bait by any means. So we'll do the, do, do our darnedest to, you know, serve.
We're seeing it starting to slow down with housing a little, but commercial is going the other way. It's actually going up. So total building permits, we're actually up still, even though residential is sliding off.
You can believe it. Well, interest rates are kind of going up. So it's starting to price, and housing's just gone up so much. So now you have high prices and
Right.
and interest rates going up, just it's, you just get lower demand and people like to actually, the man's there if they can afford it.
Yeah, we're great.
Well, well, if that's good, I'll, I'll just kind of make a few changes. I'll send you guys a signed copy of this.
Do. So coming back to Montana, man, they're hauling windmills up there right and left.
No kidding?
Oh.
How long are those propellers? There gotta be.
Those propellers.
Eighty feet piece.
Yeah, I'd say at least that. They're they're on the, a bed of a truck.
Yeah.
Oh, I know. Great big space. And they have a trailer that trails behind the poles and barrels.
Man.
I would say every 15 or 20 minutes, you see the load of something going up.
I think it's awesome.
Are they in your area?
We, so we, we are, so in our integrated resource plan for 2021, we, you definitely, we're going to, we have, we have company owned as well as purchase power agreements. Where we're purchasing the power from other wind, wind fields.
Well, we don't know, of course, where these were going, but we've seen them all the way to the Montana border on like 15. So they're going somewhere up in there.
I mean, it's, it's harvesting wind. I mean, it's a renewable resource.
Yeah.
And the biggest challenge really is transmission. Kind of, you've got these wind corridors, but generally people aren't, you know, hanging out where the wind is. You don't have a lot of cities aside from what, Chicago, I guess.
Yeah.
They've got to be a constant.
Yeah, how the Midwest is, oh crap, everything. It's a wind corridor. Talk about, you know, about Wyoming and down into, or Nebraska and Montana and Idaho. Dude, you get in northern Idaho, the wind never stops almost.
And so Rockin' Out Power with Hack Power is Pacific Corp. Pacific Corp was home by Berkshire Halfway Energy.
Oh.
Which we have several utilities. We have Nevada Power. We have Mid-American Energy. With Berkshire Halfway Energy, we have the largest wind portfolio in the country.
Do you?
Yeah.
The largest portfolio in the country.
I didn't know. I didn't know either.
You have all Wyoming though, don't you? Uh, no, we don't. We have quite a bit of assets as well as agreements up them. But there's other, there's other companies that have, because there's a lot in Wyoming.
Oh, huge.
You have all that stuff in Southern California on your way to Arizona?
I don't believe we have any fields in Southern California or in California.
This is right, right in between, you go out of, you're driving from LA to Orange County.
Yeah, I see that.
And, and, and it's cool. The interesting thing is, is those tips, despite all those large windmills.
Yeah.
They're going over 210 miles an hour.
Huh?
They look like they're really going slow, but they're, as you said, those are really long. And so you kind of, kind of think of, you know, if you're just, you know, close to the, the center, you don't have to go that fast. But if someone's out at the end, they're going to be running as fast as they can to keep up.
I've heard before, that's one of the reasons that they have these bird desks around them. Because a bird, it's a little bit of an optical illusion. Because at the center, the core stopped going that far. If you get out, what you said, 180 yards or feet out there, that's a long ways out. And 200, I thought was, I heard 180, but they, I guess it got a little bigger. Yeah. So 210 miles an hour, well, a bird flies through there and just doesn't realize it.
Well, and there may be some wake turbulence behind that too.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I wouldn't want to be.
There's a, there's what's called a wake turbulent when it comes off the end of a wing or a propeller. It just spins and that big of a propeller. That, it, it, yeah, you can't, that's why if you'll notice, when you'll notice these planes and the thunderbirds when you're out there, you'll notice that the plane behind him is level two or slightly above him, slightly. Because if he's blowing, it'll flip him over. You get a, you get, you get a, a big plane and you get another big plane behind it, it'll flip it over. That's how powerful wake turbulence.
See, no, it's interesting to watch those, those propellers. They used to be straight. Well, now when they go out, they go out like that and then they turn up. So they obviously are not a straight propeller anymore. And I realize they put the scale all these and figure out what, what's better and what's worse. So. But Kirk, you remember Gage?
How you doing? Doing well, doing well. He said some very nice things about us in the last meeting.
Yes. Yeah. Well, Kirk, this was a great report.
Then I just, the, so I've got a Weaver County contact list. If there's someone that can just kind of review that at some point in the future, just let me know to make sure there's no changes. Main thing I think is, the, if we've got a, if we've got an emergency, is it the, Eli Johnson who we've contacted?
Well, we got a new gal there, Dave. What, what's her name? That got Lisa Schwartz.
Schwartz. Emergency, emergency management?
Yep. Lisa Schwartz.
She's out of the sheriff's office. Sean, do you have a phone number for her?
I can get it right now.
Oh, we'll get it. Her connection.
Got it in my phone.
But that's where she resides, is at the sheriff's office. If you wanted to drive up and actually meet her and see her, that's where you'd go do it.
Well, and the nice thing is, is we've got, we've got an emergency management team and Brett Myers is our Northern Utah. And they're doing, we're doing some really cool things. I've kind of got emergency management. Obviously we set up our command center. We try to get things set up, but he's been, we, we have meteorologists. We actually have two here local and three in Portland. And what they do is, is they, they are looking at what's happening based on weather and are determining if we start having higher risk for power interruption, fire, all sorts of, sorts of things. And at times of really high risk, he contacted, I think, you know, going to get a microburst coming down through Centerville. He contacted the the, the police chief, or it was the fire chief, excuse me, fire chief at Centerville and said, hey, we're getting some data here. There could be an issue. And so we're being proactive, notifying our communities with the, the information that we have. And so we're trying to kind of, again, it's kind of pushing that envelope of how can we be prepared? How can we notify and have those lines of communication?
That sounds really good.
This is, this map that I included in there. This is, so this is the mouth of the, of the dam in Huntsville. And so this is kind of the geographic, geography that would be impacted by that kind of September outage that we talked about.
So at least four outages coming your way, Gage?
September.
I've heard that.
Okay. So you're familiar.
Well, and he's telling us that this grid up here is a single source grid. They don't have a backup to it right now, yet. And so when they, when it goes down, it all goes down.
That's the reason we have power outages.
Right, right. Well, they're working to.
We're working on hardening.
Get another source, hardening.
Tough thing is just that, and right by the dam, we just, we don't really have any ability to kind of.
Yeah.
Work around that.
No, that's a tough one. I, I understand.
Yeah. So it's a tough spot. The other, other project that they notified me that I'm going to get some more information in July is we're going to be doing some work on the, the transmission line from Ben Loma to El Monte. El Monte's right at the mouth of Ogden Canyon by Rainbow Gardens. They're going to be dealing with the two towers that I think are your property. This is tower structure 34 and 35. And I'll get some more information on that, but I'm assuming we're probably going to need to get a conditional use permit. And I know that when they were working on some of those lines in the past, you know, as things were unsettled, some, some three rolled down into some of the neighbors. You learn from our lessons, but they really kind of want to proactively work with the communities that are involved with this.
Yeah.
Before they began to make sure everything's tightened and done well.
Okay.
So just a heads up on that, as well as I didn't put in here, but yeah.
You're replacing two towers.
That's my understanding.
So when they do that, that's pretty major.
It's, it's, yeah. Yeah, I got to get equipment up there.
Yeah. Well, don't they get the, the tower, they get the new tower erected and everything? And then when it's time to go, they move the lines over, then they tear the other one down?
Again, I haven't looked at the plan, but you, you, yeah, and they can either sometimes do it as a hot, hot fix or, or, or are they going to take the, the circuit down?
And I'm not sure.
They move it, yeah.
Yeah. I'm not sure how, you know, how they'll, how they'll set that up. And how are they going to get equipment in it? Are they going to, you know, get access roads up there to work on it with equipment? Or, you know, do we bring it in via helicopter? There's a lot of different parameters and kind of cost and negotiation and working on getting through that. So, but again, the unions are going to, you know, replace these towers before we have issues.
So a little later here in a few weeks, I've got a site tour planned for us.
Where?
At the top of Ninth Street.
Oh, okay. I think I saw.
There's that, there's that tunnel that they found human remains in. They want to know what to do with it. And I had an opinion about that, but I felt like we probably ought to all walk up there and look at that.
And we ought to see it.
Well, anyway, if you notice where these tires are, this is the top Seventh Street. So just right there together.
Pretty close.
Yes. So while we're up there, we could look at it if we want.
I like that idea.
Yeah. Be right there.
When I say, you have that Bonneville Shoreline Trails that kind of, yeah, those transmission towers. Okay, cool. And then we've got another, which I talked to Sean about, which seems to be kind of a, no issue whatsoever. We're doing an upgrade to the Taylor Substation. We're not increasing its footprint. I think we're just updating the equipment in that, my understanding is really that no.
Correct.
We don't have to do, no, cop, nothing.
Right. Yeah. It's all interiors, so you're not expanding the size or anything. So no permits required.
Cool. So those are kind of some, some major projects that are kind of, kind of impacting. I think that outage is going to be really kind of biggest kind of issue to get, get ahead of in September preliminary.
So Sean, we own that piece of yellow property right there, huh? 45 acres.
We do.
How come these big parcels like this keep popping up? I, we talk and we say, well, I think you know everything. And then all of a sudden, one of these comes out of nowhere.
Well, this is, we've, we've talked about this property before.
Have we?
This is where the guy wants to relocate the BL. Just above their power lines.
Yeah, this is.
So yeah, it's above that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that is, but it is a large piece of property up there.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any value to something like this. Well, good roll. Well, Kirk, did they give you a, a thought about how long it would take to do this?
To do which?
These towers?
No. And again, I think I gave you some information in July, is what they told me. The planning group. Because they said, hey.
I would expect that to take a week or so to do that.
And frankly, I don't, I couldn't even hazard a guess because this is, I'm still in my first year and I haven't done a transmission tower change. So once I get through this one, then I'll have better, better guidance. But I guess still everything's somewhat site specific. So, but I was making notes saying, hey, you know.
Well, it doesn't matter. It's not like, I just wondered if you had to know. Do you happen to know what kind of a tower they're going to replace it with? Is they going to put up the traditional pipe? Are they going to put a new one in there?
I'm assuming it's going to be something, I mean, I believe it's a steel lattice is what we have. Because when I went and kind of looked at the hammockers that were hammocking on the tower. Hammockers that were hammocking on the towers, those were the ones that are along that Bonneville Shoreline. I'm not certain. I haven't, I just know that the number, but I haven't gone.
Good.
A wood to pull. Right, transmission tower, but most of those are steel. Um, a couple more things on the, on the list. Watt Smart program. Uh, county's taking advantage of, uh, our Watt Smart. So anytime anything energy related, you guys have pumps, anything that uses a lot of energy, if you're upgrading, making changes.
Right.
You can get. You get incentives, uh, for the. Generally, if you're upgrading a piece of equipment, you have a base.
Yeah.
Kind of piece of equipment. How we can incentivize the difference on those.
Okay.
Sometimes up to seventy percent.
That's huge.
Um, generally, well, you get the, a lot of, uh, you get a lot of savings, uh, on energy from it, so that's a win-win for everyone. And the nice thing on a lot of those is when you get kind of a higher end, more efficient, they tend to have more bells and whistles as well. So you get more optionality on those pieces of equipment.
Yeah.
So if you're in the planning stages, you know. Contact Sonny and get him involved and you kind of have you walk through that, because you may save some people money.
Give me just two seconds. We will, we'll definitely do that.
I'm sorry, Kirk. You're about done, are you?
We are.
Okay.
We're about done.
We're going a little longer, aren't we? I think we started late.
We started about ten minutes late.
Trying to get good info out.
There you go. Now, this is important.
Yeah. I'll be honest, you and I working together is probably. Probably what happens more than working directly with the.
It's, it's true. It is true.
It's amazing all the things that are happening. I'm sure sometimes your head wants to.
Oh. Then new things every day, yeah.
Dave, you've got twenty plates spinning, and every day you get, they add more. It doesn't ever seem to be like. Every once in a while you retire something, you cheer.
Yeah, you look back and see, oh, I did retire a few things this year, but your plate's still full, so. It's, it's good. Always funny work.
Never a shame, Dave.
That's true.
So kind of like county finance background sometimes. And you can not me up, just feels like laundry.
Yeah.
Okay, the, uh. Ogden Nature Center reached out. Carolyn, I'm reading upon next year.
Was that right?
Yes.
At that same event?
Yeah.
Very nice. I'm sure my wife will read again next year, so.
Yeah, that's, that's a fun, that's a fun place. We're working on it through Rock Mountain Power Foundation. I've gotten fifteen poles that are, uh, donated. So the, uh, Marriott Slaterville and Ogden border by the BDO, where they kind of changed the topography of the land, those poles have to come out. And those are fairly likely used, so we're gonna donate those to Ogden Nature Center for hammock park.
Oh, how cool. That is cool.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We appreciate you doing that kind of stuff.
It's, it's fun. No, it's, it's, it's a definite win.
Yeah. All right, Kirk, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming in and.
You bet.
You bet, doing this, going through it, kind of a little bit of a relaxing presentation, feed you and anyway, we appreciate you. Well, you know, so Rocky Mountain Park. Uh, is there anything that we need to be aware of that you have planned for our area in the next four, five years?
You know, I, I don't know any. I think the, the, just trying to maintain and manage the growth.
Boy, that's, and in this area, that's a, that's substantial.
Yeah.
Yeah, we agree with that. You know, it's amazing how it was in Salt Lake and then it kind of went to Utah County and Davis County and. Now it's finally coming into Weaver County a little more. We've always had growth, but I mean, major growth. So we're seeing that now.
Well, and I think, uh, you know, we've got a good, we've got a good workforce.
Yeah.
Good trained people.
You do up there. So you know. We're, we're, uh, we're pushing that industrial area out there now. And, uh, we've checked in with you guys to see what kind of services we have out there. And we seem to have enough service out there to do enough for some pretty major stuff. So we're not concerned about that. And, uh, you guys have been good to work with, so. I don't know, that's about all I have to say, Sean. You got anything you wanna?
That is Kirk will keep you up to date when our Western Weaver General Plan is approved. So you can see what we're planning for in the future and hopefully coordinate that with your own plans.
Nice. And, and, and really kind of a, we, we, we lost, my, my director moved on, Brian Anderson. Uh, my new director, um, Lisa Romney, uh, she's been in the, uh, states, you know, for our, our Rocky Mountain Power. Our economic, economic development, uh, expert.
Oh, okay.
And so my new boss is now kind of, uh, she's dialed in, uh, to that economic development. And so it's a phenomenal resource that, um, I've got closer access to, not that she wasn't inaccessible. But as things are occurring or whatever, she's gonna get it more in real time versus coming in a reporter, you know.
Yeah.
Mingle type meeting, I should get it in the weekly meetings.
Yeah.
So definitely be able to be a little more responsive, not that we haven't been.
Yeah.
It's nice having that here.
It's very good.
That's what I say, very good. Well, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming in and, uh, spending a minute with us and eating a little food and. It's good. It is good. Well, Sean, uh, Jeff Stevens. Did not accept our. Invitation today.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And we don't know why. Okay. Oh, is it? Well, before we set the meeting, we called to make sure it could go.
He says work with the new gal.
Worked with the new gal. And after the big deal he made out of it, he said, no, no, don't get it.
He sent a text on Saturday. He says, I don't have Scott's number. I thought to leave.
Well, okay, it is what it is.
Okay, so we're waiting for. The one thirty?
Well, no, one o'clock, I got some stuff to bring up. We still need to talk about it.
Well, thank you guys for lunch.
You bet. We appreciate you coming in. We kind of do this. What we have found is that, uh, we got so much going that if we'll provide a lunch, it's another hour a day we get. And it's actually really works out well for us. We're very happy with it.
Yep, I've just found I just forego mine.
Well, so many times you do.
Well, thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Any questions or concerns, by all means, reach out.
We would do that.
And Sean has been phenomenal, which you already know, but.
We do know that.
It's been, it's been good working with Kirk.
Good.
We'll continue that.
Thanks, Kirk.
Thank you. Good luck to you, friend. Thanks for letting me kind of interrupt our deal. Appreciate it.
I just got a text. Charlie Ewer from our planning office is asking if you wouldn't mind stopping by on your way out.
Is that second floor?
Second floor suite two forty, just as you're about to go outdoors.
Charlie?
Yep. Well, thank you. You're welcome.
Just the right side, pull that door out. Whoa, whoa, straight in front of you. Pull that out. Okay. So. Me and Rick took a field trip the other day. We went out and looked at the entrance, these, uh, pathways. That, uh, they have out there at the, uh. Roy High School in Sandridge.
Well, for the school pathways.
Mm-hmm. I want you to look at those. I do understand now what, uh, Jeff thought about.
Well, why are the trees all there?
But.
That doesn't melt snow very good.
Well, that, but they're on private property. See, this is what happens. You build that and then private property comes in. You see that shed that's built there? Keep turning. Turns out there's three of them out there. Three of these pathways.
Yes. What do we talk about now?
So. School district, Weaver.
Yeah.
They don't want that pathway.
Well, I got that email from Jeff Stevens over the weekend.
Yeah. So, uh.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
I know. So we went out, me and, uh, Rick Grover went out and did a walkabout and took some pictures of them. And I'm gonna show you. Well, so here they go. These are the pictures.
Where is this? Is this, what pathway is this?
Alby Sandridge and Roy High.
Oh, this is the Roy High.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Yeah. Look at the private property, though. You can see they're dark and covered and.
Yeah.
Yeah, look at this. That's, that's not real safe.
No, that's what Jeff's complaint is.
So do we have a way to keep that off of this path?
Well, people have the right to go to their property lines.
Yeah.
So it's not like you can prevent that. So, uh, Rick and I, in our discussion on this. He suggested. Uh, option one is a thirty-foot trail right of way, including a ten-foot hard surface walking path. He said, if you make it a little wider, then it's safer. Ten-foot landscaping on either side of trail, three or four-foot fence on the edge. I told him, I thought we ought to bring the, the, uh. Fence down to three foot. The reason is somebody could just jump over it if they felt.
They're not, they're not gonna be trapped.
Yeah, they're, yeah, that way they can't be trapped, exactly.
What happens is the homeowner though wants to put a six-foot fence there.
Well, on his property.
That's, yeah.
And that actually happened.
We don't have control over that.
Uh, right here. Or show you that. Right there, if you actually look at that, you see on the right-hand side of that?
Put the building there.
Well, the left side's a building, the right side, and they're both our fence, but you see that guy put a fence inside the fence?
Yeah.
Cause he didn't want anybody to see it.
Yeah. So we, even if we put a three-foot fence, somebody could put a six-foot.
Well, actually, what Rick said, if we make it part of the, uh, covenant, they can.
Well, it's so.
But we'd have to.
Who owns that property? On either side now?
Not yet.
Okay.
So we'd have to make sure that went in there.
We have, if we have that control, then.
Right.
Yeah, I get it.
Well, if, so if we want to push this through, I think that's what we're gonna have to do. If we don't. So his second option here says twelve-foot right of way. Well, twelve-foot, that's big. Hey, you can drive a car up a twelve-foot. You can drive a car up an eight-foot.
I think eight foot's plenty.
You know, it's, it's kind of funny that you, uh, mentioned this today, because I did some driving around yesterday, actually. And I went and saw that pathway. You remember there in Uwena, where we had to put that pathway in with that cul-de-sac and that drain box there? You remember on our trip there, if you, remember that was by Burton's?
Where was it?
Burton's property. It comes.
Oh, yeah.
And you went and goes into that new subdivision that Jeremy Yagi. That thing's what, about a four-foot sidewalk and it's nice. He put a nice fence on each side and.
How high?
I want to say it's six foot.
It might be. He, he wanted a little bit of privacy.
And he puts some trees on his side of the property.
Right.
See, and that's the problem. You guys are coming up with the exact problem. You want some privacy, so they do that and they create an area where you can trap somebody.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're right. I'm just telling you what you create if you're not careful. And that's exactly what Jeff.
So what is Grover complaining?
Well, he and I felt like if we lowered the fence, and he said, uh. Uh, that you'd have to have a no building option on the lot adjacent to that. So that, uh, if that fence was there, they'd have to realize in the back of the property, along that fence, he couldn't build a building. Cause you wouldn't want somebody else trapped in there.
Yeah, yeah, but that building there, that could be danger. I could see that it's dangerous.
I can too.
So I.
There was another one up there that there wasn't much on, uh, was just, uh, it was short, went through the property.
How long, how long is this one gonna be?
Uh, just the width, the, well, it'd be the length of a lot. However, then it's gonna be between the football field. I don't have the plans, but it's between a couple of fields.
We have, I would think they wouldn't put any fence there. That's on the school district side. What they do is their business, not ours.
That's true.
Uh, so just on our side, if we made it a three-foot fence and said, look, you can't have a building right there, so it's a tunnel, I think it'd be. I think that'd be just fine.
Yeah.
Then it, then it'd look more like the right side of that, something simple like that. And that's safe.
See, I don't mind that.
Yeah, that's what I feel, is what you said.
I don't mind that.
Then you can see it, you can't, yeah, I like that.
All right, so if you guys are not.
But I don't, yeah, I don't like the idea of it being, if we can keep it where it doesn't get closed in.
Like a tunnel.
To, like a tunnel. To me, that's the hazard.
Do we need to do anything along the sides of any of everything on the back for order those two?
Well, so what we'll do is we'll create this in the, uh. What do you call them?
CCNRs.
CCNRs on those two lots.
So when they, uh, uh, somebody applied for subdivision here?
Not that I'm.
But they're getting ready.
They are, right.
They are getting ready to.
Okay.
But they haven't yet. Yeah, they both, uh, I, there's two guys here and they've already been in, talked to me.
Okay, so they need, so they just need to be aware of this.
Right.
I don't want to take them by surprise or.
I agree with that. Okay. All right, we sit the same way then.
Yeah. Good job.
All right, good. All right, well, we're five minutes ahead of ourselves.
I was exceptionally, so you know, though, Sean, I was exceptionally pleased with the quality of work. Uh, and the, and the look of that pathway.
Oh, yeah.
I was exceptionally pleased with the box that they put at the end of that thing. And, you know, it's funny, but.
The drain box?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, even the Sunday, there were kids on bicycles.
Was there, has, has he said anything to you about flooding or anything?
Not another word.
Great.
Uh, the drain box was clear. It looked good. Sean kept it nice over there.
Now, that was almost two years ago. Yes. Looked at that.
Yeah, but it's, so here we go.
So that's, that's great.
Good. Good. Pardon me. Hi, Kevin. How you doing?
Hey, thanks.
Good.
Those are the most comforting things I've ever worn.
I got three minutes before my next meeting, so go ahead.
If you'll just give me a moment while I. Take a nap in my slippers.
I got a good.
These are ice cream shoes.
No.
Know what they call them, but they're. Just some comfort, they're light, they're as light as air, aren't they?
Yeah, they are.
And they're.
You can wear them.
What brand are they?
Okay.
I'm jumping on a Zoom with.
How'd that go?
Box thirteen.
Okay, good right now.
Okay, what's the change order?
Oh, it's just to do a, it's to see if we want to do a milling. So normally it'll relate.
Right.
They just taper it down to where it's just.
Okay, that's good. And, uh, it is time for we address that, you know, we knew it'd be coming up now, we hadn't done that. You know, I've talked to several people lately about serving on that board. I can't get anybody to say yes.
Theory of cost.
Well, they all know it's gonna be a, a little bit of a hotspot, you know? Well, we've also been notified. Yeah, notified.
Everything else is on schedule, right?
By those folks across the track, that they're getting ready to come in to get a, uh. Uh, will serve letter from LMSA for housing.[1737.11] So I suspect, uh, you know, this will all come to a head again pretty soon there.
Actually, I had this discussion. We finally drew pictures and we're like.
That's right. I agree.
You can do the KS.
I don't know. Thank you.
Right.
What are these in?
The divide.
Lindsay.
Good bud.
This is. Okay, no, that.
Which, look, right? That's not a bad thing.
Yeah, suggested some we should look at. I mean. It's time.
Yeah.
For LMSA to transition, you know what I mean? And even if we don't physically do it this time. We've gotta set ourselves on a path to do it. So it is time. All right, bud. Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate the call. Bye. Well, so LMSA. They've had one board member resign. And Kent Bradford, at the end of the year is gonna retire, so that'll be two. Right? So. We've gotta get, uh, two people lined up to get on there. And I've talked to several people lately. And, uh, you know, nobody out there. You know, I, I ju, I talked to Cliff Bell the other day. I said, Cliff, you really ought to do this. He says, you can, I said, everybody out there hates you now. He said, you think that you wanna give them a good reason to really hate me? He said, put me on that board. Well, anyway.
He's a plumber, isn't he, Cliff Bell?
He's a builder.
Oh.
What does that stand for?
Service area.
Why don't we call it that, Gary?
What do we call it?
Can you say it?
We just don't say it that way.
Oh, I heard your talk.
All right. Everybody, our one thirty meetings here. This is to talk about the North Ogden Divide Overlay Project. And, uh. I mean, what? This is a.
Potential change order.
Okay, go ahead.
You wanna run with this? You want me to?
Um, go for it.
So the easiest way to describe what we're discussing is we kinda drew, Ashley drew a little picture. We had a discussion on what this really.
Little pictures, right?
Yeah. But it's the devil's in the details here. So generally, when our guys do an overlay, they taper down the thickness of the overlay down to what they refer to as a skin patch. Basically, it capers down as thin as the aggregate in the asphalt is. And in this case, it would be. What Granite suggested, which I think is actually a really good idea, that we probably. Could see some realized benefit is what they would do is the last two hundred feet, is that right?
A couple of paper lengths.
Yeah, maybe it's closer to a hundred feet. They would mill down to where we have, we're doing a two inch overlay over the whole divide. They would start their mill to where it goes from a skin thickness down to a two inch mill. So that when we come back over with a two inch overlay, the top of our new surface of asphalt. Same elevation as the existing road elevation. Rather than have it tapered down to a skin thickness. Does that make sense?
It does.
And so. The problem is, the, the reason it's as expensive as it, as they're suggesting is they have to load up a milling machine. They have to haul it up there to one end and then load it up and then haul it to the other. And on top of that, as the mill is running, they have money in here to have a dump truck that basically backs up and gets that mill. Catches all those millings and hauls them out. Well, what they suggested to us is. Right off the bat, the initial change order is for just under seven thousand dollars. Half of this cost would go to, uh, North Ogden. Cause they're doing the North Ogden side. They're gonna do it on their side. We would only have to do the Ogden Valley side.
So we're on the hook here for about seventy-five hundred or thirty-five.
Thirty-five hundred bucks. And if we have one of our guys and our dump trucks follow them and catch those millings. It'd drop that thirty-five hundred bucks by about another eight hundred dollars roughly.
Actually, we would like those mills, wouldn't we?
Well, there's some definite benefit. Um.
Recycle?
Well, not just to recycle. A lot of times when you're putting fill in around places or close to the road. It's good fill. Lasts a long time. It's.
Kinda compact.
Or, yeah.
Stays in place a little better. So there's some value to those millings. We just have to.
Question I have here.
Yeah.
And I've been on the road lately to show. Uh. You get a little bit of a separation through expansion and contraction of that joint.
You do.
And so water ends up going down in that joint.
Yep.
And you'll find it eventually breaking out where this, if a little chip's off the end, you don't hardly notice it. But this you do.
That's a good point.
Well, yes and no. So what's gonna happen is every time our plows drive over that skin thickness there.
This?
Yeah, they're gonna catch that. And, and you're gonna get water that can infiltrate back under that and freestyle and expand it the same as you would in that, the butt end joint. But what we can do.
We're gonna do that. We really need to go up and fill that with.
Crack seal it.
Crack seal.
Yep, that's right. That's what I was gonna say. We can crack seal that.
That's an extra cost too, isn't it?
Well, it is, but.
Well, we do it all the time.
Every year we do.
It's part of our.
Yeah.
Well, we get, and you don't have to shut traffic down.
Right.
Uh, you can do it while there's traffic in the area and ten minutes after you do it, they drive across it. Nobody cares.
That's right. And, and so this, where we generally don't do this mill approach. It's kind of an interesting experiment to see how it lasts and holds and wears in comparison to what we generally normally do. Which is kind of a skin patch approach.
You know, I just came across another product like this.
Mm-hmm.
Called hydraulic cement.
Oh.
You know what that is?
Not familiar with that.
It has an expansion property. To the cement, ever so slightly. So if you do that, you cut the. You don't lay the, like the top pitch, you don't lay it on top, cause then it just pops out. If you're trying to seal something, you either cut it straight. Or you cut it dovetail it kinda back. So you cut it kinda like this is when you put the hydraulic cement in.
Oh.
It kinda holds in.
So it kinda keys it in under the existing surface a little bit.
Hydraulic cement, you can get it out here at Con- Concrete Specialties.
All be good.
Holds it up down in there even tighter.
Hmm.
Normally applicable though in cement applications, not in asphalt applications. But I wonder, you know, there's different types of asphalt you taught me.
Mm-hmm.
And some of it have some expanding properties to it.
And, and you do get, you do get a little bit of movement, breathing with temperature changes. Um. But, but like Commissioner Jenkins alluded to, the challenge we run into is in the cold is when it shrinks. And that's when you're more susceptible to the water infiltration that can migrate down into there and freestyle. So, but. Our, our thought is, this is. This, no doubt about it, this would make for a smoother ride.
Right.
All right, so we're talking twenty-seven hundred bucks. Are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, why not? For that price?
Right, well, it gives it a better. Well, we're okay.
Much better, right, okay, perfect.
Yeah. We've, uh, been working with North Ogden. They did some overlay on thirty-one hundred north. And they, they stopped a little bit short, so we're working with them so they can coordinate with our contractor to fill in that gap. From where we were gonna end to where they'll go. And as part of that, they were gonna include their side of the mill.
Yeah.
Taper on their side. They're gonna pick up that time. That's why we're only half of this.
Otherwise, if they hadn't have gone on board and done this, done this remaining section, it would have been about a thousand foot gap of old.
Yeah.
Asphalt between our new stuff, their new stuff, and what they should have done too. And it's kinda like.
That doesn't make any sense.
Let's just do it right from the get-go and so they've.
Yeah, where, wherever we start that, North Ogden ought to be continuous.
Yeah, and so they've partnered with us really well and they're gonna, they're gonna do that missing, missing piece there. So it'll look, it'll look and feel really nice.
Missing link?
Yep.
The missing link.
Exactly, exactly.
Good.
So that's it. We just wanted to get your blessing on this before we told our contractor. Move forward with it.
But does that start, it started the day, right?
Started today.
They out there?
They're out there as we speak. Ashley was there this morning.
That's the most. Interesting way I've seen Kaylee ever spell.
She's a sweetheart. She's great. We've, we've really enjoyed working with her. Uh, she does a great job.
A-A-I-L.
C, C-A-I.
Yeah, C-A-I-L.
Call it, you can.
Uh huh.
For one.
Kaylee, Kaylee.
Kaylee is.
I agree, that is an unusual way to spell.
So, yeah, they're up there working, got the road shut down. They're working on shouldering type work in preparation. Then tomorrow morning, we're gonna meet with them and run through some of the areas where. Uh, Joe and Jared from the Roads Department have identified they'd like to adjust some of the grades.
Ah.
Cross slopes. Uh, just to help with drainage and water control.
Yeah.
So we'll walk through that with them in the morning and they'll start, um, paving Wednesday.
Well, we got good guys in our Road Department.
Yes, we do.
Don't we?
They care. I mean, they, they care.
Bring up that horseshoe pond again.
Yes, sir.
So you guys, we got about fifteen minutes here for our next meeting.
Yes, we do.
So I'm gonna bring up to you. We've had a meeting recently in regards to horseshoe pond. And, uh. We've come up with a couple of decisions. That one run by you?
Here we go, Gage.
Well, these are good. These are good. You guys will like this.
That's right. Okay. So first thoughts, to let you know what's happened since we met last. That property on the north side's been bought. By, uh. Bailey.
Bailey.
K. Bailey.
K. Bailey.
On the north side or south?
Yes.
North. So these two.
Two pieces on the north.
This one.
Okay, you told us about this before.
Or did I? I didn't know if I told you.
Yeah, I thought we talked about this.
Okay, so we met with North Ogden. Or Pleasant View, not North Ogden, Pleasant View, cause this is in Pleasant View.
Right.
And, uh. We told them we'd give them up on the idea of moving the pond. And of course, you know, it helped them if we moved it, but since, uh, we're not gonna do them, it's like, well, okay. So they're gonna talk to Bailey, but. The goal here. Is this. We'd like to purchase that sixty-five feet right there.
Right.
Just right across.
Uh huh.
And the purpose of that. Is so we can have a road that goes right straight through. You know, that guy wanted to do this thing where he'd come over and, you know, it just squirreled out. It just didn't work good. And so the more.
It takes into our parking and, yeah.
The more we sat and talked about it, we thought, you know. We really need that road to go straight through. And then it'll come around and turn and go right down the edge of this property and come right into that road right there.
One big loop.
Uh huh. Well, that makes this piece good. Of course, they had a road scheduled there. But it makes sense. So these guys have got, uh. Uh, a, a road frontage edge right there where they can come south and out. Really enhances the value of their property.
Yeah.
Now, Bailey, they've, uh, they've gone to Pleasant View with a site plan of what they'd like to do there. And they're showing warehousing in here, Gage. Big warehouses. So that would be warehousing here and warehousing here.
Hmm.
And they had, uh.
Hmm.
Wonder if I kept that paper they showed us. I asked for a copy of it. Were you in that group?
Sean wasn't, but Ashley and I were.
Did you keep a copy of that?
I didn't.
Well, we asked about getting a copy of it. They said it was kind of such a far-fetched. Plan that they didn't think it was gonna stick.
Pleasant View?
Pleasant View, yeah.
Why, why was it far?
Well, he had so many warehouse.
Oh.
Buildings jammed in there. It was kinda.
He didn't leave hardly a square foot undone.
Overusing the land almost, if you will.
You can't do that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's kind of their opinion.
I mean, if you're gonna have warehouse, you gotta have parking.
And, and that's exactly where they're coming from, Commissioner. They're trying to scale it back.
This is, this kinda shows how they anticipate that road going.
Here's the road that we're talking.
Mm-hmm.
Hold on, let me see.
Uh, another road goes across here and comes in.
I see it.
Okay.
So anyway, uh. That being the case, uh. Our goal, of course, and this is what I told them. I said, if we can't expand the size of that pond, then the value of us goes, for us goes way down because we wanna increase the size of the pond. And make it so it'll grow to the future use of all this. And, uh, so they all kinda understand.
Is there any extra dredging?
In order for this to work, you need this road here.
We do.
I mean, so.
In the future.
We need, in order for that.
What we need to expand, Gage, what you just said.
Yeah. You gotta have access.
Right. If we can move that road up there, then that gives us a room right here to expand some.
Okay, so you're saying move the road north?
Yeah, just right to there.
Okay.
Then that would give us to here to expand this.
Yeah.
And it is what we, it is. You don't get more than that, but it's enough that we, uh.
Well, does that do us any good?
Oh, yeah, that's a substantial amount.
So if you go back two weeks ago, Commissioner, to answer your question, the storm we had over the weekend over Memorial Day.
Yeah, it's a good storm.
It was a good storm and that pond filled up about two feet.
Yeah.
Higher than what the normal level is.
Really?
So think about that. I mean, as the area grows, as more comes into it. To have that extra capacity is a big deal.
So what's your proposal, Mr. Chair?
Well, so.
You have one.
You guys limited us to three hundred. Uh, that, and we haven't, we haven't. We talked to that guy about it. I told him I'd talk to you. You guys, the squelch said, you didn't wanna go any beyond that. He was trying to get closer to four hundred. Uh.
How many acres?
Sixteen.
What is that?
Sixteen, about.
Yeah.
Sixteen acres?
Mm-hmm.
But the size really doesn't have anything to do with it. This is, this is. Locked into one use and one use only.
So, so you're, you're talking this piece and part of this for the sixteen?
No.
No.
Just, just us that, right?
Just that. No, that, that.
You're talking about buying the pond.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And then what? We have the use of it, I'd like to buy it.
Here's my thing.
It was always ours.
Okay.
Once again, so we have use of our own property.
Yeah.
I'd like there to be a trail all the way around that stuff.
Well, I wanted to turn this over to Parks and Rec.
Been out there with Todd already.
Yeah, he says we gotta have enough to do it right.
What is Todd thinking?
We haven't, you know, John came up with a little drawing, I didn't.
Yeah, so just a little, so it's asphalt and it doesn't take extra maintenance.
Yeah.
We gotta mitigate that.
Todd thinks it can be successful, it it'll cost a little bit.
Yeah. Yes, yes, so what's our, what's our end cost by the time we develop it?
Well, we, we we've really kind of just spinballed with Todd a little bit, we've never sat down and laid anything out to come up with hard numbers yet, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Just because we're early enough in the game still, we haven't, we don't even own the property, right?
Right.
Right.
And so we haven't really got quite that far down the road to answer your question. But having said that, we see a lot of value in doing this right as well too, because if we do this the way Todd's thinking, it works in conjunction with what we want it to see and look like, so that we have full maintenance access around the whole perimeter of the pond as well too. Right now, without that trail, it's a little bit touchier, a little bit more challenging to get around that, do what we need to do.
So the trail really had served two purposes.
That's right.
So it'd be for recreation purposes and for maintenance.
That's right.
That's where I have it.
Exactly. So, so it benefits both sides.
And you could do some stand-up, those paddle boards, it could be a little paddle board, because the water moves so slow.
It does, and 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 if we strategically put in some, you know, kind of a gazebo picnic type aspect to it, a table.
But that's, you know, as I recall, I look at that, that water is not something you want to dive into.
Well.
Oh, it's fresh, it, the water goes in and out, that's all the time, it's a hundred percent fresh water.
It's just storm water, Gage.
It's really.
Storm water.
It's really not.
That's all dirt banks, I mean, I mean, I wouldn't want to climb in that.
Not, not right now.
Not right now.
I mean.
It it's, the quality of the water is really not that much different than what's in Willard Bay right now. It's just the way that the, like Commissioner James has told us in the past, the beach material, once we get that improved in the way we want it to be, it's gonna be a much better situation.
Some of the silt and everything and put it
Yes.
All that we can excavate away down.
Well.
But there is no beach, Gage.
Yeah, there really, there really isn't.
Yeah.
Underway access.
It drops right off.
All he's done is what they've done on all those channels out there, they just excavate it, keep the silt out.
Yeah. There's any fragging it out there?
Really not that much.
Okay.
And and keep in mind, Commissioner, that's a great question, the frag likes the slow-moving stuff, which is fairly slow, but when we see high ebbs and flows like we do with storm events, that kind of helps add a little current, a little speed to it to keep the frag-mighty generation down a little bit. So it it's, it's good, right, it's it's almost like the perfect scenario to avoid that.
The money for this would come out of the stormwater money. So this would not affect our budget from the county.
Except for ongoing maintenance.
Well.
But if we don't own it now and it's not being maintained.
But but this would be a county-wide drain, Commissioner, which would a hundred percent qualify for that stormwater money.
We could take.
Can you use that if it's recreation, though?
Well, we would still be doing stormwater maintenance on the actual pond, so yes. I don't, I don't think we could necessarily pay for the recreation element from stormwater funds.
Right.
So the initial envelop.
We just do it, we just do it to a higher level, we just do the maintenance to a little higher level, but it's taken care of. Yeah, but he's talking about, well, he's talking about uh, tables and.
Yeah.
Uh, batteries or anything like that, we all, you could use it for that. But that'd be small compared to everything else.
Yeah, but but maintaining, putting a nice beach area or, you know, shaping it the way it needs to be, we can, all of that. It adds recreation and stormwater.
That's right. So it's a combination.
Correct.
Right.
I love the idea.
What about Pleasant View? They willing to put any skin in the game or?
Well, the the challenge is, it's not big enough for Pleasant View.
Okay.
So it, to to try to make this a larger, bigger-picture regional facility, there's just not the square footage of property we need to get to where we need to be. So this would be primarily just a county facility.
Okay, so Pleasant View's out. So but Pleasant View is gonna talk about to Bailey, about possibly selling that little seventy-foot piece along there. And so I'll, I will be back to you in another month with some answers on that.
Yeah, I think you've gotta have that extra seventy feet.
That's what we do, that puts the road through. And then we'll see what this guy says when I go back to him.
Yeah, kind of chokes it off without it, Commissioner, to your point, yeah, it really kind of helps it.
Anyway, I can get you up to four hundred for this, because I think that's what it's gonna take to buy it. Although Ashley thinks the guy got everything he needs, he don't know why we'd give him anything more.
He thought you were saying. He thought you were gonna give him everything he wanted.
Well, if you give him four hundred thousand, that's everything you want, right?
Oh, no, he wants to build, the reason I want to give him four hundred, just so you know, this piece right here, he wants to keep that acre right there. And build on it.
Wow.
And if we take, if we put the road through there, he can't have that. So I, that's why, good night, look at that, where'd you get those shoes?
Yeah. Pretty fancy kicks. So the sixteen includes that, man.
The what?
The sixteen acres includes that area that he wanted to put the building.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, includes that.
Well, I would, I probably am okay with that, but I'd want to see Pleasant View acquire that, that distance from that road here, because I think that becomes crucial.
Yeah, it does.
You know.
I agree.
Without that, I'm probably a no, with that, I'm probably a yes.
All right, well, there you go. That's, actually, I'm not too far from myself, Gage, I, I feel like it's that important.
Yeah.
That we have that piece.
We got that other acre for.
Well, I tell you, if we do that, that's gonna be a neat little pond over here we can work on and.
Well, yeah, I think it'd be that, it could be a good county asset, I like Parks and Recs out of your portfolio to make sure that they are okay with that.
Well, that's why they've been talking to Todd.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree.
And Todd's on board, I've talked to him a couple of times.
Well, and that's the only way I'm a yes vote.
Well, I don't want to pay four hundred, and I I want that other acre for the four hundred, if we're gonna go up to four hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want, yeah, which.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
All right.
Otherwise, he can keep it, we want the, we want him to start maintaining it right away, like his contract says.
Yeah, and put it in a gazebo.
All right, well, there you go, it's yeah, I I hope that something decent comes out of this, I'm excited about it.
Let me know.
We will, Pleasant View, they actually like it, they're on board and
Yep.
this enhances the the water coming out of there, enhances their park, makes them look better. He told us that the guy that owns this right here has come into him and he's getting ready to do something along here. Pleasant View has a drain that comes out off of twenty-seven hundred and up through here, and it goes right through there, you see that?
Yeah.
Little dark spot. So it's right in the middle of that guy's property, so it really needs to be moved over. And anyway, so they're working with him on that right now.
That'd be his responsibility to do that.
It is, his responsibility. I asked him how I put it in there in the first place, that doesn't seem right, to put a a drain right through the middle of somebody's property, that seems pretty strange. They can't answer that. Dana, is it?
Dana.
Is mad with this, she's a nice lady.
Isn't she awesome? She used to work here.
Yeah, well, I'm telling you.
Is that the Pleasant View gal?
It is.
She wouldn't say shit if she had a mouthful.
Really?
Yeah, she's just very nice and pleasant, and she's just a sweet lady.
Yeah.
Yeah, and she was very nice to deal with in this whole thing. So I drove out there over the weekend, and you're right, this place is being, it's up to the square.
It's moving.
Metal's up.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're. Uh, it's the guy that's at Micro Brewer, brewing out there.
I think their plan is a winery, if I heard that, yeah.
I know.
Some sort of, maybe it was a brewery, Commissioner, I thought I heard winery, but I could be wrong.
Whatever, in my mind, it's the same thing.
Yeah, it's gonna be.
A little different process.
And they're moving forward, right?
Yeah, anyway, they're going, they're going hard at it out there, Gage.
Wow.
So they anticipate this road going up and then turning parallel to that, and then eventually going across the track of their, their connection.
Clear up there past the Allen plant?
Well, no, 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 right there, that road is going straight through. So that'll come down and connect in there, just like that. And he he's gonna, he's gonna develop all this.
Does Bailey own all that?
E K?
Well.
Bailey owns the two.
The two big parcels.
These, that one and this one.
Okay.
So.
Is that, is that E K?
E K Bailey, Brent. Also a great guy. And and to be honest, Brent's, Brent's pretty sharp. I think once he understands the vision of what we're trying to create, I think Brent's gonna see some value to that.
Do you?
Yeah, he's, he's, he's a pretty sharp guy, so, yeah.
Yeah, that, that road down along the south property might be a benefit to them.
Oh, big time.
Big time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the reason why the people that own the property of the pond now wanted, they wanted it down there, they wanted, you know, when that develops to the north, they wanted to be able to, I'm sure Pioneer gets some money back for building that road, but the timings now for both of them, it's, I think it's gonna work out better.
Yeah.
So I think it facilitates being able to move that road up out of the pond area.
Yeah, I agree.
Plus, that's really, that's seventy feet, that'll, that's seventy or eighty or even ninety feet more, we can enlarge the size of that pond.
Yeah.
And it's like I told them, without that, the value of the pond to us, it is what we got today, so why would we even care about it?
Yeah, if we can't increase it.
Yeah.
Then all we're doing is paying for something that that they have a responsibility
Exactly.
to maintain, which they're not, but.
And and point is, it's an important piece of infrastructure, we're using it every year, right, as the storms happen. So it was good that we had that in place, because there was a lot of water that flowed out of that storm two weeks ago, so.
Yeah, good to know.
Well, I was thinking about this over the weekend, Gary.
Hmm.
The center that, where you go out on that island.
Yeah.
Why couldn't we go out on that and just build a a cement abutment, you know, maybe two walls with three or four feet between them. And that's it, that would increase the size of that substantially too.
It would, so I think.
You could take everything right out of there.
You you could, but keep in mind, you've only got so far of a reach with those long sticks too.
Well, we'd have to work around that with Joe.
We'd have to size it so that we maximize that.
Is thinking of ways we can increase the volume in the pond.
And and that would work, so one of the things we also talked about with Todd was, was taking that trail that kind of wraps around the finger of that land. Right, so it it kind of provides a little bit of a interpretive-type trail that meanders through that, through that peninsula, finger of land there. But if we wanted to skinny it up, we absolutely could.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we'll just have to, you know, before you turn Todd loose on that, you'd want to get some kind of an engineer to look at that and
Right.
tell us.
And we gotta, we gotta determine how far we can reach with those long sticks as well too, because once you get fully extended out with those booms on that, your, your digging ability to to put any force on it down to to dig and scrape is, is pretty, pretty hampered a little bit, just because it's just such a long.
Too far out.
Yeah, you just don't have the leverage.
Sure.
So.
Well, good, all right, well, looks like we've got an okay to go to a certain point, so.
Two birds with one stone.
Uh, we'll, we'll hear what that, what Dana says when she comes back about E K Bailey.
Yep.
And then we'll bring this guy in and talk to him again, and then we'll see where we go, if we've got something we can come to.
And Schuler.
Schuler. That's Dana's last name?
Schuler.
And she, I I found out she's a Plain City Navy, I didn't know that.
Really?
Yeah, she lives out in Plain City. So that's why, that's why she's so nice.
That's why.
We only allow Plain City.
Amy, Amy was the gal in the meeting, Dana was.
No, no, the gal in the meeting is.
Okay, that, that was Amy, Dana was one of them on the phone call.
Well, she's nice too.
Also, super awesome.
Amy, she's just really nice.
Amy is a sweetheart, it was.
Better, yeah. Well, man, Gage, if we get this out there and this full of.
That's good warehouse space.
Yeah, warehousing, all of a sudden, we'll have a ton of warehouse there.
That's a good spot for it too.
Yeah. All right, everybody, good.
For the next one?
Yeah, we're ready for the next one. The two o'clock. Oh, so that's you too, so we just need Portland in.
We're just hanging out with you guys all day.
Oh, there we go.
This is a follow-up conversation on the South Weaver, a boundary adjustment and subdivision that's out there.
Do you recall that one that was out there with Davis County?
Subdivision?
It's, it's a residential, it's a continuation, Nelson's Homes.
Oh, yeah, good.
Which, I remember that.
This is the county boundary discussion right in here.
I remember that. This is your county boundary along the freeway. Yeah, fact I talked to.
I'll let you drive.
Yeah. Depends if you need to escape or not. Right here, just sit right there, right where I can keep my hand.
There you go.
Good. All right, so Ashley, is this you? We're gonna talk about this?
Yes, it is.
Oh, I do remember this, it was on the, yeah, south side of the freeway. Yeah, we told them that, yeah, we would adjust that.
So, in our last meeting when we talked about this, the direction was to annex this into South Weaver. And then South Weaver would have a little bit of parcels on the out.
Both sides.
Weaver County side. Uh, they were not thrilled about that, they did not want to do that, as I understand it.
That's right.
Correct.
They didn't want to what?
They didn't want to hang it across South Weaver City.
Really?
Yeah, they said that it seemed too complicated to them, so they, they'd much rather do a boundary line adjustment, a minor boundary line adjustment.
You could tell them to hang that in their ear, and I'll tell you why. Last time we tried to do a minor boundary line adjustment, they gave us the finger. Just remind them of that.
Davis County, right?
Yeah. You just go ahead, so when they're ready to work with us. Sorry, you keep going. I've, I've been working on this for four fricking years.
So let's get half of it done right now.
Well, we tried to, and they just, you tell them when they're ready to come to the table, you tell them all the property owners need to come to us first. That's it, sorry, I, we could probably kick it, I'm pissed at it. If you can't tell, I'm a little pissed at it.
No, and and we actually did talk to Davis County staff, and they said, yeah, it makes sense, let's move forward.
Oh, retards. Have they talked to their, Mr. Kendall in the attorney's office, because he's making all the decisions for the commissioners there? I I don't know that for sure, I'll have to go ahead and check, but.
So I brought Steve Paul here, I invited him to this meeting, because there has.
Steve, did I represent us correctly enough yet?
Well, that sounds like all the feelings that I remember feeling through that.
We had it all done, it's all done, because the river's gonna keep moving, and it's on the other side. I have, I'll stop for a minute, sorry, Mr. Jim.
Oh. Ran away.
So the reason I brought Steve, there was a minority boundary adjustment done in twenty-ten, and I was curious if that was the beginning of those conversations that I heard about.
So twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty, not twenty-ten.
That makes it ten.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we had a similar situation, a developer in South Weaver was crossing the line and crossing the county line and wanted something to be resolved, the ending resolution was there were some property that went to Davis County by boundary, minor boundary adjustment, and then some property that went to Weaver County. Uh, that effectively, at least as I understand it, provided them the resolution, yeah, was that parcel right there?
The K Y parcel.
Um, now, we had proposed doing another two additional rounds of minor adjustments in that area. The last one would have been for this exact same property that these guys are concerned about. Uh, the ending details of, at least my understanding with Davis County was, they did not want any of this to be executed by the government, to say, they wanted it to be executed from the people involved. Uh, my understanding is that they would be on board with allowing the actual landowners to push to make such a change, I think they'd probably go through with it, but I've been surprised in those interactions before. So as far as what that looks like, you have a surveyor that creates an annexation platform for you to make, be able to make the adjustment, and then it's approved by the commission in both counties. If approved. Anything else I should spell out on that?
So this is something that was done in twenty-twenty, and so when I reached out to Jake with Nelson Homes and said, yeah, let's hear what Davis County has, because our commissioners have strong emotions about how the boundary exchange has gone in the past, so uh, we want to make sure they're on board with it, uh, before we put too much into it.
You can't do this, it's illegal, just ask the Davis County attorney. No, I'm serious.
Yeah.
They're creating a precedence which makes this illegal. This is what they told us, and so.
Well, we tried to do it on the other side.
Yeah. Love to help you, but the David Kendall and particular down there.
When was that, what you were, you were calling that?
It was last year, twenty twenty one.
Yeah, this whole thing started twenty nineteen, maybe twenty eighteen. And it's basically still active, at least whenever we light a fire under the commission.
Well, you know, we'd probably allow you to put five hundred units in there. It's according to the Davis County Attorney, it's illegal. That's too bad. What did he say was illegal? Uh, you, it's not considered a minor boundary change. It's a major boundary change. It has to be voted on by eighty percent of the entire county population, theirs and ours, for approval or something like that.
Was that going along the whole course of the boundary and?
Bits, we had bits and pieces. We were gonna do a minor.
There were fifteen parcels involved, uh, like three different ownerships. Can you remind me where the boundary goes and what exactly would be adjusted?
We wanted to fall off for you guys or for us?
Yeah, here, this, so these three, cause one of them's the cities. So four parcels total?
Yeah.
Is that all we're looking at? And where is the county line right now?
It's right there.
Yeah, it's right there.
Goes along the south line of those guys, yeah.
It goes straight over to the river and then follows the pathway of the river.
And the proposal would be to move it up to the north line of those four parcels?
Yeah.
Is that, that's a weird thinking. That matches up with what was discussed a few years ago between the counties on a desired line.
Didn't you want to pick the right away line for the?
Yeah, so essentially that would be the south right away line of the freeway in that spot.
Okay, there's your, there's your freeway.
Yeah, this is where you start. What do you want to do? Art right here?
Yeah. So I think we should discuss it now and discuss it twenty years again and discuss it another twenty years. Cause that's what we keep doing in place to call this guy.
Does, is this Davis Weaver County?
Yeah, Riverdale City.
Didn't we want to come up here and when we got to that line, go straight across anyway, Harv?
I'm looking at the wrong map. I'm over here.
I know. So didn't one of the goal here always to go along the freeway and then what what we got there to go straight across?
That's the ultimate goal.
Yeah.
But then South Weaver got involved with that trailer park in there. We kind of backed up. Can you move the, who's driving? Me, so. Where's your trailer park, Harv? Keep coming this way.
There. Right there.
Right there is the trailer park. Keep coming this way. Bring it this way. So we just wanted to follow the U dot right away along the U dot right away here, cause that river continues to move. So what happens is, is you get, here's more, you get people going. These residents down here, people come in here and then they squat back in here.
So is that Davis County?
Davis County, and the Davis County boys will never come and service it. And our guys, Weaver County say, well, that's not us. That's Davis County. And then the Davis County, they, well, get your people involved and when they make enough complaint to us, they don't do squat. And he just needs to follow this thing. This needs to follow that line. The U dot, they're not likely gonna move the line to right there where the trailer park is so they can capture their tax. And those beggars didn't make it short term, by the way, thirty days and more. They let people stay there year round. It's gonna be the same thing.
Really? Really?
Yeah. I learned that this weekend too.
I didn't know that.
All the things that they, South Weaver said that agreed to, they stuck it to us.
And then Jim, were you gonna follow the U dot right away in this location?
We didn't really address this location, cause this line goes straight clear out to the Great Salt Lake. You know, this line from right here goes straight over to here. You can see it.
Yeah.
It goes clear out and straight to the Great Salt Lake. What we wanted to do is follow the U dot right away all the way over to this line. But then these people, there's five homes in here. They didn't want to go into Weaver County. They wanted to stay. And that's why we just said, I'll just leave. You know, am I doing this right, Steve? Just leave the trailer park and just leave this part. When we get to the trailer park, just keep it along the freeway because every twenty years, our staff spends hundreds of hours redoing this, cause the river moves. Then the state says, well, that's the river boundary and nothing's the same. The river, that river, that river moves a ton. And if, when you look at the boundary right now? That's where the river was eighty years ago or almost ninety years ago now, Steve?
It had been a bit.
Cause we've plotted it and done everything. And these guys have done it all done. It's all the work. It's all done. All it needs to be done is sign. No, but they can't be, this can't be a minor law change. We have to go out to vote, which costs hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's not, just do a couple of minors like you want to do. But no, the attorney says you gotta put this to a vote. And I'm not for spending two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in Weaver County so we can do this law change. That's what it's gonna cost, according to their attorneys. Now, if their attorneys come back and say, yeah, we can do that, then I'm gonna call BS because they just signed law and ordinance and line section and all this other crap, cause we couldn't do the other something, this up here. So it's, you can't.
Can't have it taken you through.
That's, yeah, it's coming back to bite him in the butt now. Sorry, real Pat, I'd really love to get this done soon.
What damage is being done by you, to you by being in Weaver County?
Lots. We lose like twelve lots?
Why do you lose them?
Um, cause South, South Weaver says it's not our jurisdiction. We can't give you density there.
Yeah, so can't we give you the densing?
Our layout would have to be on that lot. So in other words, we have it drawn right now where the roads come through and and there's portions of those lots in both jurisdictions. So could we go back and redesign some of that? Yeah, it's just not ideal. Ideally, that area is never gonna be served by Weaver County. It's always gonna be served by South Weaver. South Weaver kind of said, we don't really want it. We don't want you to come into our municipality if you're not in, if you're not in Davis County. And so that's kind of where the conflict is coming, they're getting that right.
Yeah, that's absolutely right.
So we just, we, we miss out on a few lots as a result of that. I mean, if we came in and just figured out a way to redesign that and put the, the boundary right there where the lots would start in that location and then go north. But I think that kind of messes up our.
It would, but I mean.
So why don't you go in there and just get your, get it approved and dead end the road into there. Get it approved. Then once you get it approved, come on back and we'll, we'll approve the part to the north. And then we'll allow you to put, uh, like say forty, fifty, sixty.
Hundred in the acre sounds pretty good to me, right? That'll make sense.
Well, we gotta put enough in, we can afford to come over.
So, so let's, so it feels like, it feels like we're damned if we do and we're damned if we don't. In other words, let's just say Davis County says I don't like it, but we're okay, we're okay, we're okay taking that from South Weaver. Then you're gonna come in and say, well, then why didn't you do that for all the rest of them, right?
I, I don't say that again.
So if, if Davis County comes in and says, yeah, you guys, um, we'll take it.
We'll take what?
We'll take that property. We'll, we'll bring that in as part of.
So then they annex to Davis.
Yeah, we'll do the minor boundary. We're not gonna go spend two hundred and eighty thousand dollars of over money. We're good with that. We'll take it. If they say that. I'm just saying, if they do.
Davis County, the South Weaver's fine. The Davis County Attorney says he can't.
Let's say we got both of them to say yes. You guys would come in and say, well, screw you guys. We already tried that argument. You didn't go out to then, it's illegal then. Why is it different now? Yeah. Right? That's, that's your position?
That's my position. Is that right, Steve?
Hold on, there's two others in the group. Oh, and this is where I get rolled sometimes.
I want you to go back and talk to Davis and South Weaver. You'd get a yes from them. I'm more than likely okay with it.
I'm staying here.
Okay. Cause I think that's where. That's where we're at. We've gone and done that.
South Weaver said yes. Davis County, I haven't talked to the attorney specifically, but Davis County, the initial response was, yeah, so.
Well, tell them that, that, why they're doing this minor, that they ought to do the rest of the minor. And I'd be on board with that too, but. They can't do this without the other, according to what they shared with us. We'll find out if they can get Davis County's blessing on it. I'm a, just so you know, I'd be a yes if they'll do that other part over there.
What's the other part on the other side?
The part we've already asked them to do. Just along the freeway, just right there. Go right along the freeway. Not along the river, right along the freeway. Then you'd have a unanimous deal. I like that idea too.
Yeah, we've always been
But I'm a no. You buy, you get one, you get the other.
In the meantime, the other question was, so our phase one is all in Davis County. Uh, but we just have some infrastructure that we need to lay in Weaver County. So we originally talked about that, that MOU. MOU saying, we're gonna lay, at least the, the stuff needs to drain through Weaver County. Uh, we originally said, you, you said, answer the annexation question first with, if we were, as South Weaver annexed across the county line. Um, so that, that was my next call question is, would you be willing to be okay with the infrastructure being laid while we figure out this, this whole boundary line or annexation?
I'm surprised that, uh, city won't take it. Uh, that's what surprises me. Yeah. Why does the ki- city care if they've got a few roads in the county? Yeah, you know, that, that doesn't really affect them. Uh, I mean, every city in Weaver Counties, in Weaver County, they continue to operate. We very seldom even talk to each other.
Yeah.
It'll be the same thing here, whether they're Weaver County or Davis County. Doesn't affect anything.
City can, a city can cross municipalities. They do it. Or man, counties, they do it out of.
Yeah, Harper Dunn, there's a good example. Who does?
Actually, don't think if we went and got a no from Davis County, I think South Weaver would relook at it. But they, they just, something they haven't done and they have done the boundary line agreement. And so they were saying, I don't know. They said, we'd much rather do the boundary line agreement and we, we're not gonna do the annexation.
So the parcel to the west, the larger one there.
Yeah.
Have you guys tried to acquire that?
I think we did have some initial discussion.
If you could acquire that, that'd take, you could go out there all the way up to the road. And then you wouldn't care what city you're in.
Right, the South Weaver Drive. You were talking about too, last time we talked, you were gonna bring another road here to connect, bring that in off the South Weaver Drive.
Yeah, that's the point.
Off to Harper.
Yep.
And I don't know, Scott, but some of the reason might be because so, if you, if you just look kind of at a rough, at a rough layout, I know you can't all see this, Gage. Anyway, the, the county line just comes through right there. So the challenge, so the challenge is you got a little bit of infrastructure that comes up. That's the county line. And then all of these lots, see they're, they're split over the county line.
One, two, three, four, little, five, six, seven, eight.
There might be some issues with that, 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 that's the county's, maybe the county's.
Well, we would just have to estimate taxes. Yeah, it is, it'll get two tax poses.
Yeah, I don't see, yeah, prefer not to, but.
Pardon?
That's what you kind of said, uh, to Pat, to get two notices.
How would that, how would that approval work though, from, from the county's perspective? If we came back and let's just say they say, no, we can't get it done. We have to leave the county line right there. Do we just change our infrastructure design and lose some lots? Or do we leave it just like that and just have that property owner be noticed twice from both counties and from, I guess?
They pro rate each side, don't they?
Mm-hmm, they do. We'd take a percentage of it. And if the building was ten percent on our side, we'd probably take ten percent of the value. But we'd work it out.
It seems like that's a long conversation that we're gonna have to go back and have with.
It is. But I don't know why the city doesn't jump on that. If, if I was the mayor of that city, I'd just go ahead and annex with him. Don't worry about it. He's been a mayor of a city like that. Yeah, you know, it's not a big deal.
And then, and last, after our last meeting, they had an all meeting, all staff meeting, city manager and I don't know if me and the commissioner members were included on that one, but, but they all said, I think the general sentiment was, we'd rather not because we feel like we can do that. But if not, I think we go back and have.
And I understand why they would rather not. But we're not, we're not taking the main part of their city.
Yeah.
Uh, the capital, I mean, where the, where the offices are, none of that. So it's, they're gonna operate just the same they've always operated. And I suspect we will, uh, get together and work a little MOU or give them a few thousand dollars a year to plow that.
Yeah.
And it'll all be done.
If my respect is, if the, if the Davis County Attorney says no, then I think we can go that route.
Yeah.
Well, as far as I'm concerned though, Mr. Jarrett, they wanted to start with their infrastructure. I don't have any issue.
Oh, I don't either.
Yeah, I think I'm good with that.
Yeah, we'll get that. Once again, if we don't care about law, why would we care about the infrastructure? You know, lines, uh, they're just drain lines, service lines to go through there. You don't see any reason we should worry about that, do you, Ash?
No. No, the plat will have easements for the city to access there.
Sure. There are different districts that provide all the services, Canada provide any of.
Yeah.
But why do we care? Yeah, yeah, I'm with you. We don't.
I'm sure you do, yeah.
So your development covers those one, two, three, four parcels? It's not going to include those other three going west to the county lines?
Doesn't include that.
And one more on the right is owned by the city.
Isn't it a detention basin or something to that effect?
Yeah, yeah.
If the adjustment to the county line were uh, to go through, would we want that to just include their development or would you guys? Would you wanted to have that include all those parcels that are not really serviceable by Weaver County? The one, two, three, four, five, six, seven parcels?
So you're telling me that these are Weaver County?
Yeah, so the county line, you get this blue line, the county line runs right here. So the proposed idea that we had discussed a year or two ago was to take this line and adjust it to the freeway here and then drop back down to that same line.
Right. And that makes sense. I'd be all in favor of that. But you're telling me right now today, that's Weaver County?
No. It's the dotted line above it, Scott.
Yeah, this dash line, dark dash.
Well, that's what I thought it was. That's why when you had that up there.
Yeah, sorry.
I thought, boy, I obviously misunderstood.
Those were just the locations of surveys that have been filed in the county.
Okay. No, I agree to go up there and down. That made perfectly good sense. But you know, they don't wanna do it. They don't wanna do it. I don't, I don't know why Davis County would accept this one. They wouldn't, they wouldn't even talk to us about the other time. Well, Harv's got a good point.
Uh, we appreciate the, I actually know that about the attorney, so we'll reach out.
Well, fine, that's good to give you a good answer. But it is what it is there.
Yeah, no, that's great.
I wouldn't mind suing him, Gordon. If he says it's okay to do this minor line, I want to sue him for the other, cause he's creating a precedence that he told was illegal. I just, I really don't. And the thing is, is his name's Kendall and he lit, it, it's, it's something to do with this old stupid South Weaver, you in a fight they've had for a hundred and fifty years down there, the Hadfields and McCoolies. It's the same crap. And I'm just, I'm tired of, I'm tired of dealing with it. Living on the edge of the hill, but it's stupid. So he get, stupid.
So just to recap. Plan A, go Davis County, see if they'll approve a minor boundary. If not, then talk to South Weaver City again. See if the annex or function crossed boundaries.
With an MOU.
Yeah, and so let's talk about that MOU. Would that be for building permit approval authority for the city to have all the authority to impose its planning, approval process, building permits, all that?
And maintenance.
And maintenance. You're talking about having the city, if they'll agree to do all this, so that, just like we did up in Powder Mountain.
Absolutely.
Cash County and Weaver County.
Right.
Cause we approved stuff in Cash County based on that MOU.
Yep, correct.
And do we envision any pushback from South Weaver on that? I think they, I think preferential, preferentially they, they'd like to go grab this and bring it into Davis County, but have we asked that specific question to say, if we can't get that done, would you be okay?
I, I haven't asked that, but I, I think it would be a totally different conversation if we got the no.
Yeah, so, okay.
And then Plan C, if they still say no, Plan C would be, if I adjust our layout.
So while you're sitting right there, can we change? What time, JDC? Really?
Yeah, does it say another? We're, we'll be in July, hopefully in the July fifteenth-ish week.
Okay.
Are you here or there?
Is the plan to still annex in the place?
But the plan right now is to get all of our approvals through Weaver County, cause Plan C doesn't have the ordinances to allow us to do what we'd like. And then it would be to annex in the place at that point.
That's the plan.
Yeah.
I'll be honest with you. There's a couple there. I'm not sure that's actually gonna happen.
I'm worried about it.
Yeah, so we have to be prepared to take it. Yeah, that's what I said. That's fine.
I, I don't know if it's not fine. I think everything's up for, up for negoti- everything's off the table. So I guess if it's not fine, so knowing that you guys are, I, I feel like we've got a good sense where the commissioners are at. Knowing staff is on board too, cause there's gonna be a lot of pushback.
So I'll tell you what they're thinking. Now, he hasn't said these things to me, but in our conversation, he might as well say it. They wanna make sure that we don't give them any more than we are, and then it goes through. And then they don't wanna take it. And I says, well, if you don't wanna take it, that's okay, then we'll go ahead and give them nine hundred. He says, well, that's why we wanted to make sure we're involved. So they're playing defense here. And they wanna make sure that they don't get any more than we've already guaranteed them. But then they don't wanna take it. Well, that's why I told him, I said, well, if you're not gonna take it, let us know. Then we'll give them more. We'll actually go with more density. Yeah, that's what we don't want. Anyway.
We need to talk some more.
Yeah, I'm really talking about that.
Uh-oh, yeah. I got, I got more to say that I'd like to say, but.
Sure, that's okay. Enough said.
I'll bat my tongue.
Look, I didn't give them a ton more. I give them that much more, that much more.
Yeah.
And they, they're just hell bent over this whole thing. So I don't know. You know, I went out to their meeting and I laid down a little thick and I know, you know, I told them, I says, look, don't worry about it. If you don't want it, let us know right now today and we'll just go ahead and do this. Well, they wouldn't do that. Wouldn't commit that to me. Uh, and they, I told them, look, I says, it's, it's in ours, we have the right to it. Uh, and if you don't want it, let us know. And, uh, anyway, that's what they're doing. They're, they're playing a little defense here to make sure it isn't, in their words, any worse than it is. And then they're, they're just not gonna do anything.
We, we didn't have that information, but seeing their behavior indicates to me that that's, that's kind of the end game.
Yeah, that's what I view, is that's kind of the end game.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Alright, well, thanks, you guys.
Good seeing you again.
Yeah, I can see you put this on your calendar.
This is on the.
Where's Chad Meyerhoff, I wanna see him.
He just wanted in.
Well, he did. Oh, there he is, there he is.
The what? I think it was the Utah rail.
Oh, yeah. I was okay with that, yeah, okay, yeah. That's what you sent to us last week, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Text Jared and say, talk with you.
Alright. So Chad, are you driving this meeting?
Yeah.
I guess. Okay, this is a discussion involving the possible annexation of lot into the Pine View West Sewer District.
Yes, we're gonna have to switch over from the county commissioner to the Pine View West, which I can't remember who the chair.
Oh, so we're a board? Okay.
I, I think it was you, Commissioner.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't realize that, that's what we were doing, Gage, I called that.
Well, I didn't realize either, I forgot I was the chair.
So a motion to adjourn, a motion to adjourn our work session and open a Pine View West. Water Boarding, so. Is it Pine View West Sewer Board?
Pine View West Sewer Improvement District.
Sewer Improvement District. Motion. The second, all fair side.
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, well, then we'll turn it over to Mr. Ford.
Okay, so I'm gonna call and order the Pine View West Water Improvement District and turn the time over to Chad. Okay, so what I'm bringing for you today, Commissioners, is, uh, I'll still address this, Commissioners. But we have an individual that's up here in Radford Hills, uh, that has bought a lot, so Radford Hills is a, a community drain build. I've got a real quick, uh, here, just kind of show you exactly how many lots are within that, uh, service area for the, the community drain build. Community drain build sits down here, um, right now, I believe, I counted them up, I think there's right around thirty, thirty-one units within uh, that boundary that you see there on the screen. What we have is, we have an individual that has contacted us, that's, uh, within this, uh, lot right here. Um, he's actually on, on Zoom right there, you can see him up at the top right, but Matthew Johnson. Um, and he has, his, has sent a request in here to be annexed into, uh, this district and be serviced and, and supplied by part of this community drain build, so. Um, to give you kind of a little bit of a background, Matthew's gone through some extensive work here recently. Um, uh, looking in to see if he can, uh, get an onsite sewer system, and I've had some conversations with the Septic, or with the, uh, our health department, and the soils are really unquestionable within this lot. And they've done some, uh, quite a few perk tests or soil analysis. But this is the lot in question right here, it's lot twenty-seven, and as you can see, there's actually two ephemeral streams that kind of come down on, um, you know, both sides of the lot, plus another main one that's here, it's coming through the, the front, and so the, the site design for a subject system on this lot's a little bit tight. Um, I don't know if we've fully been told that it's impractical or impossible to actually do it. Um, but they're kind of giving him the impression to really contact us to see if we can connect it, if he can connect it to this system, just because it's not looking good.
This was always intended to connect into the system, right?
So no, when you look at this.
That was never in the boundary.
Yeah, correct, so.
Yeah, go back to that map.
When you come to this image right here, this is, th- these are all the lots that were intended to, to connect into this.
And he is.
Drain build.
Here.
Yeah.
All days intended to be private.
So they're all, all on, on onsite systems there.
Are these, I, I don't know, are they all built on or not?
So these are all built on, other than this, this one right here, which is his.
Is the sewer right there?
And no, so the sewer, it's in the road, well. So he's got a few challenges for him, um, should you choose to do it, so he's lot twenty-seven, this is the sewer coming through right here. So. He would have, yep, he would have to.
Have to get an easement.
And, and there are some public utility easements, so you'd have to see if that's still, he's able to use those for an individual lateral. Um, but we do have an easement on the lineup here that he, he'd be willing to connect, or be able to connect to, so. So that's one of the issues, is him getting access to that. Um, just to give you an idea too, in the past, we've had, um, one or two other individual lots in here as well, this lot right here, for instance, was the same way, had some ephemeral streams coming down, and it was just impractical to even, uh, put a system on it, and so that, that lot there was annexed into the sewer district, I believe that was around two thousand sixteen. Um, and what we do, uh.
So how, where are these served at?
So all these lots up here are part of what's called the Crimson Ridge Sewer System.
Ridge, okay.
Yeah, and that's the little sewer.
Yeah, and they have sewer system.
Yeah, that's right.
Drain build there. Okay.
He's a little bit further away, uh, from connecting to that one quite a bit, to.
To Crimson?
Individual lateral.
Yeah, that doesn't make a lot of sense to go to Crimson, yeah, I agree.
Topography wise, just doesn't.
Yeah, no.
So kind of before, before I tell Matthew to get going too far into this process, which is gonna, um, you know, I would send him on to, should the board, uh, want to allow this, I'd send him through to an engineer to have an engineer to go through and analyze the system and, and look into it to see if it's practical for him to connect, if there's capacity there. Um, and then i- if there's something that we maybe need to do in addition to that, like some level of treatment or something like that to, to.
Well, let me ask you, is there capacity in the system?
So I'll tell you right now, we had this looked at with this lot back, back then, and if, it, the, the system was designed to handle thirty-two units, and I believe right now, uh, we have thirty-one on there, so there is a chance that, depending on what the usages are and stuff with the water. Last time they analyzed, going off of water usage data, not what was being actually discharged, but, um, when, when this originally went in, Ed Radford had additional lots right up here in this top area.
Yeah.
Set to go into this system, and then it wa- it was set to go, uh, everything pushed into the Crimson Ridge development, so.
So, my question though is, when you design a system like that, there's generally ten or fifteen percent cush they put into these things. So do you even have the ability to say that we're within ten percent of the capacity? I mean, that's really hard at this point to determine. And you'd have to go and get the water use of everybody on there, and even the water use of there, you'd have to go down and try to dig into the system and see if it's operating, how it's functioning, and I suspect nobody'd do that, they'd probably, uh, open up a couple of those manholes and look and say, yeah, it appears the work is just fine, and there is no backup, so yeah, we've probably got ten percent more, and it's a bit of a swag at that point.
It's just all, all goes off of the calculations, so stuff designed by the state and region waters, so it's, there is a lot of assumption in there.
So do we have to get state approval for this?
Um, so right now, the, the local health department would probably be the ones that we would work with, which they're the ones that sent them to us, so.
Right.
It's, it's the state approval, but the health department's been involved in it.
So at the end of the day, health department had to give their okay to it.
I believe so.
So all we're doing is saying we allow it as.
If you would be willing.
Body politic.
Yep, if you'd be willing to allow them to join or not.
I got a question. Or is there anybody else that thinks that they're gonna build back there, is that Forest Service property right here?
This property right in this.
That Forest Service?
Yeah.
Right.
Right there. So that's actually, it looks like it's open space for the reserve at Crimson Ridge.
Hey, hold on.
Yeah, but that's their open space.
Uh, would be for this.
So that's, that's, that is devoted to that.
Right, so let's go back to that other happy development, correct?
Right. Chad, would you mind going back?
Yeah, what about these guys right here?
So those individuals.
This system?
Right there are not within that system either, right here.
I don't wanna take this guy's away, or this guy, I don't even, can't even see if this, or this guy, was he supposed to go into this system?
And that's an open space parcel as well as part of Radford.
But if they've already built, then they've got septic on their property, it's working.
They've already got a, yeah, I mean, working's kind of like the assumption.
Well, this guy right here, he has capacity to, to divide that, doesn't he?
So he would right here, yes.
So he, he might be the one that would wanna see, say, couldn't I go up that line and connect right there?
And if you look on that one, the line actually cuts right through the backyards right here.
Yeah.
Oh, really, so you guys should be pretty close, right there to do that.
Probably be about the same distance as this lot here.
But he's about the only guy there, this is where the drain fills, so that's.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, this would be the last possible.
Yeah, that'd be the last possible one. Well, so what, uh, what Mr. Johnson is asking us is a will serve letter.
Um, probably at this point, not necessarily really a will serve letter, but just the, the options for him to, well, I guess it would be. Well, we would want to make sure that, of this study and the, the information behind it, before we actually gave him the will serve letter.
Right.
So I think what he's wanting is just the impression of, if it is feasible for him to.
So the question is, is if we received the information from the health department and everything, and the engineer turned out positive, would we give a will serve letter?
Correct.
Would you, would you allow him to annex into this?
Yes, so it's just annexation, subject to all the approvals, so.
I'd make a motion to do that, Gage.
Alright, we got a motion?
That's where I was headed.
And we got a second discussion, see none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, whichever one's aye.
So I'll work with Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Johnson, you got any questions or comments?
Uh, no, I just wanted to tell you thank you, I appreciate your time on this.
Hold on, let's turn your volume up.
Can you hear me okay now?
No, we can, we can barely hear you.
Barely hear me, I'll try to talk up, I don't know if that helps.
Coming from the computer, not from the speaker. Hold on, select a different speaker on the. No, 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 go over.
On the Zoom meeting.
On the Zoom meeting.
Oh.
Go up to the Zoom meeting. Blow him up. Figure box, law bottom right hand. Now, go down, go down to the mute arrow up, mute arrow up.
Now you muted Weaver County, I guess.
Is there one that says Al?
Okay.
Try it again, try it.
Alright, is that, is that any better? Much better, great. Thank you, I just wanted to tell you thank you for your time, I, you know, we've, my wife and I put a, a lot into this, and we're excited to build, and then we're finding all sorts of challenges with the soil issue, we've had, we've had the, the perk tests, the soils tests, and we're, they're just, they're giving us some struggles, and that's why they referred us over to, to Mr. Meyerhofer and, and wanted to tell you thank you. Um, I have in fact, so that you're aware, I hired Reeve and Associates Engineering, which is the engineering firm that designed this particular system. I spoke with them this morning, and they said they do want to be on the call if, if we need it, and I said, okay, let me know, I'd let them know, and but they, they said that they, they think that they can have, I think what he said was up to seventy-seven units on this, so it sounds like, uh, maybe he's wrong, but he, he was said what he would need to know is how many are hooked to it and that sort of thing to make sure.
But you know that, Scott. That's great.
So we have, we've had, we've have hired the, the same firm that actually designed the system to, to look into it and tell us what we need to do. We're willing to do whatever we need to do to get our, get our house built, and I, I've already ordered the trusses, I mean, it's, it's moving along, and and we're, we wanna make sure we get past this little hiccup.
You've ordered trusses, you'll get started probably in the year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Right, exactly right. Exactly right, I sold my home. And you tied.
I'm sorry.
So you understand what the requirements would be then, so you just do your due diligence and get the written authorizations that we need, get those back to Chad, and we can go from there.
Yep.
Did do the analysis back in two thousand sixteen as well, so they've got a little bit extra dated to help out with this future one.
Yes, well, so. Alright. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We just, we just come forward that board at this point in time, that's it right now. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hello, move second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.
Have a great day, thank you.
This is Sheriff, motion open, we'll reopen our work session.
Motion?
Second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Very good, we're back in business, it's Weaver County.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's complicated dozens, we move back and forth in different bodies. Well, okay, so, uh, we got fifty minutes still, uh, I don't see any issues here, I think we did the right thing there.
Yeah, I think there's plenty of capacity. Oh, wow. It's three o'clock in our three o'clock appointment here, uh, which is Sheriff Harbaugh. Sheriff could see it, time's yours.
Thank you, I'll make this, uh, short, sweet, um. I laugh with you, Commissioner. Um, I, I, I'm a, a little, uh, uh, concerned about the information that's been, uh, exhibited and shared about Code Red versus Everbridge, and I know that you've heard from both.
Yeah.
And, 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 and I know that you guys is ultimate, uh, to find the right one that works. But listening to the mayor, city managers, and their emergency managers, I'm concerned, so Lisa, which I'm thrilled, she, I wanna pass this out tonight at WACOG, so they, so.
So is WACOG been canceled tonight?
No, no.
I got a cancellation on my calendar.
I got a cancellation. I just got one just a few minutes ago, or an hour ago, that said miscommunication. The WACOG's going, but I, yeah, I got.
No kidding.
I got the same thing.
Okay, sorry, Sheriff.
No, 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 it's okay, um, so Lisa, uh, was able to put together all of these groups, they're gonna come out and present. And so I asked her to put a flyer together, so I want the mayors to know that, uh, their emergency managers, city managers, and themselves can come listen and know exactly what those services are. Because you're hearing back and forth, and the last thing is I want Lisa, me, and you guys being caught in the middle of this.
Yeah, yeah, good. No, I think we need to li- listen to presentations and make a decision, yeah. And we got time to do that, it's a year before they have their contracts.
Yeah, it's a year, so.
Yeah, closer to two, I think.
Is it?
But we talked about, we need to, I got it.
I got it. We, there we are. We, we talked about bringing this up again any year, so we're, we're in advance for the year of the contract to be, I think. Okay, so it's two, wow. Yeah. Even better, yeah.
Um, yeah, the other thing I wanted to talk to you about is, we had a great discussion, I had, uh, Wilkinson, uh, Ross, uh, Scott Park, and Jason Horn come out and talk about vehicle, uh, fleet and how it works, and who's responsible, and who's all this. Uh, just, just so there's some clarification, uh, some of the folks in our office did not know that it was now under Jason Horn, uh, rather than Bill, I keep wanting to say Bob Ross, it's Bill Ross, right?
Bill Ross.
Bill, Bob's the painter, right, and not him, and, and also a lot less hair, but, uh, so anyway, that was good, but in the discussion, we also talked about our, um, uh, mobile drone center, we, we, they gave us an initial bid, we didn't like it, we told them to cut some stuff up, so we're gonna, uh, start the process with, um, uh, Jason Horn, but I wanna make sure that it's gonna, something that we're gonna take out of salary savings to pay for, because it wasn't, uh, this wasn't even considered in the budget last year, so I just wanted to give you guys a heads up on that.
First fancy, I went and looked at that, you had out there. Well, they had a, a traditional van, but they, uh, you know how this stuff goes, sheriff was talking about building his own a little bit.
Yeah.
And then when you look at this, the way they present it, everything's custom made and nice inside and call, and the edges are there.
Nice.
It's been tried in multiple places, and there's technologies updated, they get automatic updates, and it just allows them to stay current as technology moves, instead of doing something on their own, and when it comes down to the price, not that much difference. current as technology moves instead of doing something on their own. And when it comes down to the price, not that much difference, is it?
That's no, when we were checking the numbers.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I mean, and the other thing is, is this is also got in their system, they design it so everything's heated and cooled properly. Cause if we just ran our own, relied on the vents to shoot in there, this circulates through. And it's just like, ah, plus it comes with a two-year warranty.
Oh, cool.
So it's, 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 it's.
The antennas are on top and they're fold down so you can, uh, deploy them once you get on site. It's just a big difference.
And, and they can put a nest on top of it for us too. When we buy one, we can have the drone mounted on top with its protection on it. So when we do, so the whole deal is, is we want a camera too. It's a three sixty view, so no one comes up, sneaks up on it, right? You know, when they're out doing their mission. And, and so they can watch, make sure they're safe. But also, we don't have to get out, open all the doors, get the drone out, set it down. You can just stay in there, stay secure.
Huh?
Launch.
Yeah, launch.
Pretty cool. It was nice and.
No, that's good to know.
So I'm assuming this was in the three hundred thousand dollars.
It was three thirty, three forty, and we said no. And, and we took away the custom wheels, the fancy bumpers, and it just the stuff that we think we need. And, and so that was, as you can imagine, was their pride and joy.
What's it down to now?
Uh, three oh nine.
So about three hundred thousand.
Well, he's got savings to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we got savings. And we also discover, we've got, uh, two, uh, shorter version transport vans that are used for the quartz that we haven't used in a year or two. And they've got like five, ten thousand miles on. So we thought about selling that to help.
Oh.
Offset.
So you don't use the vans?
There, we, we, we need them, but we don't use them. So we can get away with one instead of two.
Just one, yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, short and sweet.
Short and sweet.
But I do have a personnel matter, if, if, if you guys are up for that.
Well, so that's, before we get to that.
Yeah.
If you want, if you're gonna use these savings, we've gotta give you a budget change to do it.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, Horn, Horn is gonna take us right through it.
So Jason will work through with that.
Yes.
Motion to move to closed session to discuss personnel. Uh, motion is second, all fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, so we're now in a closed session.